All right, I'd like to call the Village Council and Planning Board Joint Meeting on March, March 7th, 2023. I show the time 6:10, a little bit of a delay here in starting, but I shall, we have a full quorum, so I'm going to open up the meeting for us and. Yeah, full quorum. Okay, showing that we both have a full quorum here. I'm going to ask to, a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I will call the Village Council and Planning Board Joint Meeting, March 7th, 2023, at 6:10 to order. Can we, we have a quorum as well, and if we could call the meeting to order, can we have a motion due?
So moved.
All in favor?
Sorry, who made that motion?
All right, so we are on to items of discussion. B1, Discussion of Unified Development Ordinance, UDO.
Okay, so. You would think. So as I know, Planning Board and Council both are aware that been working on trying to clean up our ordinances the best that I can. It's just kind of hitting a point where I think it would be easier to blow them up and restart over. And at our retreat, I know that Council kind of discussed this, and then I was advised, hey, let's get some quotes, let's look at this. I did get a quote within Focus. If you guys recall, we had contracted within Focus in years before. That's where Tom, who was the consultant before I started and when I started, works for them. They've done UDOs all through, throughout the state. One good example is Weddington. They actually did do Weddingtons, and I'll kind of pull that up. But basically, a UDO is, means for Unified Development Ordinance. What it does is basically, it's, we're trying to kind of do multiple things in this project. We kind of reorganize, rewrite certain sections, on top of get them all kind of organized better so it's easier for staff, members of the public, whoever, to find what the actual ordinance is, or what actually should apply to them. In this process, basically, we'd make sure all our ordinances are compliant with 160D and the state regulations. They should be, that was done before I started. On top of, gives us the chance to kind of go over, I know, goals and recommendations that Planning Boards discussed in the past, and then we kind of set for ourselves some certain sections, as well as Council, and kind of drive this process. This total process would take like eight, I would say nine months, nine months to a year. But I kind of want to just kind of present this to you guys, get your guys' feedback, and if so, potentially take it to Council. I mean, not necessarily tonight, but to maybe get this process rolling. It would be a very heavy, it would be what a lot of, how am I trying to say this? Sorry. It would be a heavy participation by the Planning Board. Basically, if this process would, would start in the next month, every Planning Board meeting from here on until we finish the project would probably include this. And we have, you know, staff, as well as, we've been doing Band-Aids, a lot of that will be incorporated in. And so we've kind of focused on mainly the main trouble sections that I've already identified, on top of, you know, still then updating our general language, just to be more consistent and frequent throughout. So I just kind of wanted to present this to you guys, because this is kind of my goal for this year. I know it's been, it was our goal last year as well. We did accomplish certain text amendments and changes, but just from time with other projects, development proposals, all this stuff, this is kind of the easiest way to go ahead and get this done, updated, and allow for, not, not have other things keep coming up where I can't get these ordinances updated as soon as I want.
How much is this going to cost?
The quote was for $52,000. It can be broken up and up over to multiple fiscal years. I may let Christina maybe chime in on that if she wants, because I know we've been discussing how we want to proceed with that.
So, yeah, you said it was going to be around $50,000?
Yep.
So I think if, if there's a way that in Focus can get half of the work done this year, which I highly doubt they can, but I, I think I can find $25,000 in this year's budget to at least pay for half of it, and then we can find the other $25,000 into next year and pay for the half, so we can divide it into two different years.
Now, Christina, this is Kelly. Not that I would want to delay this, but with the upcoming roundabout and us being on the hook for, you know, any overages or half, half the cost of any overages, I can't remember exactly what the details are, but are we concerned about starting something like this, or is there enough room in the budget to, to be able to cover any overages and start this project?
So that's a great question. We actually are taking the funds from our PAL bill, which is the, the revenues we get from the gas tax that you pay each time you, you know, go and get gas. We get revenues for that. So we are going to take a portion of those and/or some money that we received from ARPA to pay for any overages. We allocated, I want to say $111,000 for our roundabout match from ARPA funding, so that, that portion will go towards the construction cost. And assuming that we have PAL bill revenues, which we should, on hand, at the time that bill comes due, then we would try to use those PAL bill dollars for funding that. That, that wouldn't even be paid until next fiscal year anyways, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't see that until July, August, September, October.
I'll mention too, in this current fiscal year budget, I believe we had $12,000 in there just for generic consultant costs that we would pull from for this, on top of any additional funds. This also, even though it's like the project, this contract within Focus would provide two years of ongoing kind of support as, like maintenance slash, like, if I need help, that's two years of kind of some, hey, pushing it off to them if need be. They'll also do training with staff, Planning Board, and Council. And so there's some kind of other additives to it, to doing the UDO rewrite, and kind of having some ongoing support over the next year or two, to, you know, make sure it's implemented correctly. And then any changes that come up in that meantime that we can think about, we'll have that ongoing support to assist with.
So Hunter, you'll have to forgive me, and Christine, this is Melinda, but if, and this may be a totally daft question, but, so what they would effectively do for their scope of work is come to our meetings, and then they walk us through the process of looking at all of the current regulations, and then figuring out how to consolidate them and put them together. So I mean, I guess, I guess what I'm wondering is, is this effectively like, we're actually going to go through the process and redo this, and they're basically project managing, leading us through a monthly sprint kind of situation, or are they doing the lift for $52,000?
They'll be doing the majority of the lift. Basically, why Planning Board be involved is that what, from, from their proposal, on top of like, the way I see is like, we, we've already identified certain sections that definitely need to be fixed, like our sign, landscape buffering, all that stuff. Like, those are the heavy sections that need to be fixed. There's other sections in there that are okay. It's just, so then it's kind of then reorganizing certain, like, we won't maybe spend that much time on, I'm trying to think of a, like, we just redid the accessory structure language, for example. Like, we're not going to spend that much time on stuff that's not going to change that much. We'd probably spend time on the language that's going to change. So they'll take your, like, they'll take my feedback, staff feedback, they'll present, they'll get kind of the goals and guidance from Planning Board. I mean, they'll take basically what the current intent is, the current purpose of the language, and derive really what that is, and derive the language, and present it to you guys for then further discussion. And we'll probably then break it up into certain sections each month. But the biggest thing here, it's like, you know, it's kind of getting it all into one place. Like, right now, our tree section is Chapter 93. It's in a different complete section of the ordinance. Our zoning ordinance reference the tree section all the time. It also, in our landscape and buffering, contradicts that same section. So it's like, the goal here is to get anything regarding land use, if it's trees, buffering, just uses, setbacks, zoning districts, lighting, all that stuff, subdivision development processes and requirements, like, all in one place. Because right now, it's like I said, you can read one thing in one section, it might reference another section. You go to that section, it's there, but then if you read another section within that original section where it was referencing, it has something completely different. And the best example of that is like, for example, we have our conservation subdivision. In our conservation subdivision language, it states that the rear setback for the properties are supposed to be 50 feet. In the actual R zoning language, the setback for properties is 40 feet. If you go look at developments here, it's hit or miss on which one that went through and whatever. It's just like, there's, it's, doesn't really, it doesn't impact that. I mean, that's like, just an example, though, of like, where it contradicts, it's not a bad contradiction, but it's just unclear of really what applies. And so what?
So, okay, I am all for getting this cleaned up, because it is very confusing. What was the company that started with Rohit that was supposed to have done all this? And why are we doing this again when we've already spent $40,000 with them?
So they did, they did a reorganization. And that reorganization really didn't do that much, in my opinion, like, in Kenan Keith's.
Kenan Keith's.
Yeah. So what they did is took Chapter 93, Chapter 150, which is trees, Chapter 150, which is subdivisions, 151, which is land use, and 1, I don't think they touched 152, which is like lighting. And like, I can pull up our current ordinance and kind of show you, but right now, like, for example, in Chapter 151, you've got like, one, like, for accessory structures, like 151.054. They basically took and kind of reorganized, like, it was so, it would have been like, 151.1, 1.154. Like, they kind of reorganized slightly, but they didn't change any of the language outside of the 160D requirements. And so the language is still the biggest area of concern. The reorg is just kind of a part of getting it all in one place.
So I've looked at the contract, and to me, it seems like they were supposed to have changed the wording and consolidated where there's reiterations, or if there's contradictions. Has anybody talked to them?
I will say, let, let me just mention this too, Hunter, because I think that we had a role into making sure that they fully understood what they were supposed to be changing at that time. And I'm not 100% sure that was actually done. I'm not trying to call anyone out or say anyone did anything wrong. I just don't know if the original intent got merged when the 160D processes came into play, because I do know Rohit and Tom were working on some things, and all of a sudden, their focus was on 160D and implementing those changes and how they impacted what our current ordinance said. So I, I do think that we take some ownership into not managing that process, like we probably should have from the beginning. I know that Hunter has reached out and had some conversations with them, but at this point, it's been, what, two or three years now, Hunter?
Yeah. We just keep, the, when I started, they reached out to me in September, basically saying, hey, we want to get this project wrapped up. And I was like, what project are we talking about? Because I had no idea. And they then talked about the reorg. I went through it, and from my understanding, like, Rohit and Tom were reviewing it, looking at title changes, and kind of looking at the organization, but then look at the language. And then I tried to start going through the language, but then.
We spent $42,000 on changing titles.
Basically.
Okay, like, I'm going to ask the question again. Has anybody talked to them? Because I've been, I know you and I have been talking about this for months. Have you talked to them since you and I have had this conversation, to say, we think, even, even if we managed, mismanaged it, even if we handled it poorly, I still read the contract and still think that they should be taking care of some of these reiterations?
My, my, and Austin has experienced this with me, is my communication with them is, it goes, I send them an email asking questions. I don't hear back from them for like, a month or two, even if I follow up on it. And their response is then like, one thing, and then they ask like, a completely like, different question. Prime example of this is I pointed out, in my analysis that, that Tom assisted with, is that 160D language and stuff, like, Tom, before I started, we had all that 160D language adopted. If you go read Kenan Keith's version, it wasn't, it was done subpar. I pointed this out, pointed out examples, pointed out examples of still contradictions, and then like, they basically just, they like, deflected or something along those terms of like, how the scope, whatever, I can't fully remember. And then this got wrapped up into us changing the encode, and I was trying to get that implemented. It was like, it was so much wrapped up in the one that I never got clear answers.
So has anybody had a conversation with them?
My last conversation with them was back.
Talking on the phone, not over email?
That's what I'm trying to, I've, I've reached out and tried, like, they, it's very difficult to, it's stressful to deal with them right now.
Okay. So Christina, can you call them? Because again, we spent $42,000 with these people. I don't want to turn around and spend $51,000, $52,000 on something that I feel should have already been taken care of. And then, Hunter, this is not on you. I'm not saying this for you, but I don't want this to be mismanaged again. And then we're turning around and being like, well, you know, the tree section, we're talking about trees here and trees here, and it's still not done. So I, I'll, I'll say this. Number one, I want
to retract the statement that was just made. We did not spend $42,000 just on changing titles. A large portion of that was for 160D changes. So I don't want to mislead anyone thinking we just dropped a hun, you know, $42,000 and got nothing out of it. The 160D changes were very, very cumbersome. If you guys remember, those changes came before you all, probably last year, the year before, and it was a good 30 to 40 pages of just nothing but ordinance rewrite that we had to do. So there's a good chunk of change that was spent on that. How much was, was 160D? How much was reorganization? I can't tell you that question. I sent an email to you, Hunter, about two months ago, to get some more details onto this Kenzengun keys. And I think you were going to look into that, and I haven't had a response back from that. So I can't call them until I get some answers. But, but I will say that I think we're at an uphill battle now, because it's been three years, and we can go back and say, you know, we didn't feel like this was done correctly, but we've already paid our contract. So I, I don't know what we would, we would be getting out of it, other than just, maybe they give us a discount. That's just my take.
I mean, they, I mean, they asked us in September, like, okay, I mean, granted, yes, it's March, I understand that, but it wasn't that long ago that they were asking us, like, okay, are we good? Like, and I.
This is September of 2021. But the way that the, this whole, the way this timeline goes, so I started, they emailed me in September 2021. I said, I have no idea what they're talking about. I would like to set up a meeting to get an understanding. Did that.
Took months.
Took, yeah, it took months to happen. Then I got my bear, my bearings, went through this document, went through the language, had some questions, emailed them to try setting up a meeting to discuss further. Then a month or two would go by, they would email me back, trying to set some up, and it's like, I've slept since then. So it was like, what's, what's going on? Like, it just, it was a back and forth process to even get. And like I said, then we had to have, the other issue that we ran into was that the ordinances that they had, or that we sent to codify was back from, was it 2017?
So, hey, Christina?
Hey.
Did, when we entered an agreement with them, a contract with them, did they give us a scope of work? Was this, was this, they give any kind of scope of work? Can we go back to that scope? Can we go back to that scope of work?
Yeah. And that's exactly what I've done. And, and that's, that, that, that's.
That's what I'm saying. Like, I'm reading the scope of work, and I see.
I, I get it.
Fixing it.
I get it, but that's what we need to be able to hand back to them and say.
That's what I've been asking for for months.
And I've even, I've asked, like, that's the other thing, too, is like, I have a backend to our ordinances where the reorg is there. You know, I can, one, I can potentially, I mean, one, I can go back and review, and we can try to get some clarification from Kenan Keith's. At the same time, use that as a base document for, in, in Focus potentially, and see if that will cut any of the costs. It's just, I pulled up like, the annotated outline here. It's like, basically what they did is took our titles, and we, when I say reorganized, they basically kept the order the same and just changed the title and the numbering.
Is that what was in the scope of work?
That, yes. And that and 160D.
So, in the scope of work, all they said in the scope of work that we're just going to re-swizzle your, your titles?
They were supposed to reorganize it to make it clearer, but at the same time, in my opinion, it wasn't done necessarily. I mean, they did that, but it wasn't done, in my opinion, what should, like, the best way. The quality, yes.
Where is that?
So I'm.
Because I've seen it.
Yeah, I'm pulling it up. I'm pulling it up right now, but I do want to read this email that I'd sent to you, Hunter, because I think this kind of reiterates what my concern that, that I have on our part is. Part of the Exhibit A states, analysis of, and I'm quoting this, "Analysis of Reorganization Consolidating and Clarifying Update of Chapter 93, 150, 151, and Compliance of 160D." So we specifically laid out certain chapters that we wanted reorganization for. "I see sections of chapters were changed in 2021, most likely for the adoption of 160D, but it's hard for me to quantify the scope of work that was not completed without knowing what specifically we asked them to do. Do you have any detailed notes or instructions that we asked them to analyze, reorganize, and consolidate? If not, this is very subjective to me, and I'm not sure how we're going to argue, they did not complete the work. Do you have, do you have a thought on how to substantiate this complaint? I'm looking for specifics as to why the work was never done. So I, I do think that, in my opinion, we have to take ownership, that if we didn't tell them what sections we wanted them to reorganize and consolidate, we have to have ownership that we probably should have done that ourselves as well. And that's just my take on it."
Can I, can I just, sorry, really quickly, I, I agree with you, Kim, but I have a, it'd be great to be able to get maybe some of our money back if we could substantiate, substantiate the claim, but at the same time, do you really want these people reorganizing our, I don't really think I'd want to work with them. I mean, if they didn't do it right the first time, you know what I mean? I'd rather have a.
And not responding to your emails on top of that.
Yeah, we'll never get it done. It'll be way longer, so.
It's, it's, like I said.
Can we just, can we pursue things like simultaneously? So pursue, trying to figure out whether or not they actually fulfilled their contract obligations through looking through old emails, but then also moving forward with, is it InReach is the?
Focus.
InFocus? Oh, InReach is.
Planning Board involved in any of it?
We had to, we had to like, sign off on certain things. I remember certain, but it, but I just remember one, it was like about 160.
There was one meeting, and, sorry, there was one meeting in which the Planning Board essentially had a consent agenda that was loaded full of 160D changes. And there was, there was, there was a general sign off on, essentially on the renumbering and reorganization as to what detail it went into. It's been too long. I don't really remember. I can pull those records if you guys want. But.
I think one of the things I'll just mention, and, and I'm sure a lot of you have seen this in your own careers, is I think some of these engineer firms, architect firms, whatever you want to call them, I think they write their language so vague that it can encompass anything and everything. It could be very, it could be very narrow, but it could be, be very broad. But I think it's, you know, on the person administering that contract to really define what that means. And because, you know, it's, it was done, it's over, like, we've wrapped that up. I just think it, it's going to be a struggle now going back three years and saying, we, we don't think that you did your job. We can definitely look into it, but we don't, we don't have any leg to stand on in terms of financial commitments, because we've already given them, we've already fulfilled the contract with, with them financially. So we probably should have, at that point, not finished paying if, if we had that big of a concern.
So with that in mind, then if we go on within Focus, I think something that may be worthwhile, so we don't end up here again, is making sure that, because I know what you said, like, we just looked at X, Y, and Z, right? So maybe we don't need to look at that. But if we're looking at really having a cohesive package, then I think what we need to do is not give them an outline of just look at 93, 95, 105, even if we literally just voted on it. If this is going to do better for the next people, the next council, the next board, then what we need to do is they need to go every I, especially for $52,000, right? So then we're at $192,000 that we'll put into this, then every I should be dotted, every T should be crossed, and it should be across the board, just my two cents. So I wouldn't skip, and I don't, I don't know if that's necessarily what you meant, but you said like, we just looked at things, like, we wouldn't spend time on that? Absolutely not. I would say you take them every single second, every single line, go through the whole thing, and let's make it cohesive. So that way, next time, we're not like, well, this company didn't look at this, because we told them paragraph 43 was out of scope.
Yeah. No, what I, what I meant by that is, what would be taking your time, like, as Planning Board and in front of you, is that they would be rewriting and reorganizing our, all, every thing that deals with land use. What would be presented to you? I mean, at the end, you would have the full draft, but I'm not going to necessarily have them present to you guys sections that weren't changed, if at all, or significantly, because if it's already been changed, already compliant with 160 or whatever. Like, it's mainly the, the changes that would be presented to you guys would be the major sections that they changed the most, because that's where they're going to need some feedback, some recommendations from the Planning Board. They would still be reviewing and rewriting, reorganizing the whole ordinance in itself. But when I say like rewriting, that doesn't mean that there would be, that they can't take something that's already in our ordinance that makes sense and flows, and not, and put it in there. It just, the goal is to have it all make sense and flow.
Can, you know, one of the first things I thought of when, when you talked about this was, before we even get started, even looking at, you know, the minutia of what an actual ordinance says, is, is there an outline of the way all of the ordinances are structured? Does that make sense? And then from that, can we then reorganize and that makes sense for flow-wise? Like, has anyone even talked to any of the, anyone who applies for, you know, who comes through our process? Has anyone gotten feedback from them on what is confusing? You know, I know that you, you experience a lot of issues, you know, when people are applying for, you know, applications for building and all that kind of stuff, but like, have any of the people who've actually applied given us feedback on where our holes are and.
I wouldn't say they give us direct feedback. The feedbacks and the emails and calls I get saying, hey, I read the ordinance, it says this. Will you confirm slash like, clarify?
And you've been kind of capturing that somewhere so that we can revisit?
I mean, I had, I had one last week from the Brantley Property Development, you know, looking at their, for their preliminary construction drawings and stuff, like, and sign requirements. And if, for example, even in the sign requirements for subdivision signs, it talks about a two and four inch, it's just, and like, she was trying to get clarification, because what she read did not make sense to her at all. Like I said, there's certain sections, it's straightforward and clear, it's great. But other sections, it's not. And on top of, it can be clear in one section, but if you search it in another section, it says something completely different. So.
So I mean, almost like mapping our ordinances. So like, every place that we talk about signage, does it all roll up under one, or does it live in?
And that's what we're trying to do, is with the part of the UDO rewrite would be getting it all in one place. Like, our tree chapter being standalone does make things different, different or difficult, because it's landscape and buffering kind of goes hand in hand with that. Like, they should be right there together. And on top of, same thing, kind of processes, like, if you go read our subdivision processes, it's kind of there, kind of makes sense. But like, another prime example is, and I mentioned this to you guys before, it's like, it talks about the minimum development requirements just specifically in our subdivision chapter. And one of those examples was minimum road frontage, 50 feet. Minimum road frontage is never mentioned in the actual zoning ordinance. So it's like, does that apply to minor subdivision? Like, it, it's just like, it's very unclear. And there's plenty of time, and I've got plenty of emails from our attorney chaplain and myself, like, hey, just want to get your input on my interpretation of this, and make sure you're kind of aligned with how I'm going to apply it, because it's not, it's not clear. And you go, when I go read and do research on these other sections, trust me, I find stuff, I'm like, hey, that makes a whole lot more sense than what ours says. It's just kind of getting it to then work for, for Marvin. And we've been doing that, but at the same time, it's us keep doing Band-Aids and Band-Aids. It's like, it's, I think I've mentioned this even with one, it's like, when we just did the Women's Center or the Gates and Private Roads text, text amendment, like, we referenced another section because it was there, and it wasn't clear, but it was like, it was a whole lot easier than repealing that whole section, because you had to repeal certain, like, from a practical standpoint, just so we don't confuse ourselves at the current moment. That's the way we did it.
Yeah, I mean, it just, we, we get, you know, we get spoon fed, so we only deal with what gets presented to us. So having that 50,000-foot view is going to be really helpful, and we need to start with that. I mean, this is a, this is an instruction manual, and, you know.
Yeah, like what?
And it shouldn't be IKEA.
Like, this, this is like their sample, and it just like, it's more straightforward. more straightforward, like it's, it's easier to find. Um, but I wanted to show you kind of Weddington's, you, uh, in focus did Weddington specifically, but like where it talks about like general provisions, all this stuff. Straightforward, it, it breaks it out. So it's easier to find, like, if you go try finding like permit choice, best right in our ordinance, it's, 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 it's under like zoning, it's under the subsection in the land use of zoning administrator duties and authority. Yeah. And even the same thing for, um, try to find another example like just like theirs, like if you, I mean, the U D O, they, like what they'll do too, is they'll do like process flow charts. If you guys recall last year when we were doing the Heritage District, like I had Tom, we, we created one for the Heritage District to make it easier, but it's also doing one for like every single proposal, like it's, it's redoing it, but it's also making these tables where it's very simple for anybody to pick it up and look at and understand it. And like I said, I can look at it and, and try to make flow chart and do this stuff, but it's like, the issue is, is that when you have, you know, developers, applicants, residents, whoever looking at it, it's not clear to them. And then that does one take time for me, which that's what I'm here for, no problem, but it's then when I run into where it still doesn't make sense to me.
I mean, I, I do feel like we will make a little bit of money back just by freeing up staff time, not having to continually deal with the same issues over and over, questions, emails. You know, we want them to do their jobs and not answer the same things over and over again. So.
Hunter, is there a, a way for us to maybe, since we don't have that much confidence in them from previous experience and as Kim said, we've paid forty thousand already to this company. As Kelly has said, can we simultaneously look at this while we're doing this? And as Christina said, that this may be a, we may run into a brick wall because the contract is concluded. So can we restructure the term of payment? As our confidence and, you know, create like a pay for performance at certain milestones.
For the proposed contract?
Yeah.
That'd be.
It's a different, it's a different vendor.
And in focus is local too. Like when Ken and Keith was doing it, to my knowledge, nobody ever came in person or it was all kind of virtual.
They were completely virtual because we started their project during the pandemic, right before I came on.
Well, even if it's a new vendor, we still should do from our experience, we still should have pay for performance or hit certain milestones before we just cut a check. And then we're not in this situation again, that the body of work we received is not what we expected or what we intended, and we've already cut a check.
We, we typically do that. We, we will pay like a percentage of the contract when, when things are fulfilled and and we do that across the board with various projects, whether it be this kind of stuff or like greenway construction, even Villa tall construction. So we kind of do that in place now, but we can be more pointed and specific about what those goals and milestones are. Um, so that it makes it a little bit more clear and it helps us to manage and set expectations for ourself as well.
So going forward, who will essentially oversee all of this to make sure the boxes are checked?
It would be, it would be me, but that's the other thing about this process, it would, compared to the last one is planning board would be involved monthly. Um, so as Jamie mentioned at the retreat, if ever, anything was ever to happen to me, I don't know what that was supposed to mean, but, um, if anything was ever to happen to me, at least, at least I wasn't the only one working on it to where it's kind of if we have a situation, maybe with Ken and Keith where it's I can't come in and have no idea what's going on, what, what was happening, like planning board has been involved in this process.
So can I ask one question real quick? So along with, I like, along with, you know, paying this as we go. Um, Christina mentioned that the language in these contracts is quite vague. So can we be more specific with the language in the contracts to be able to help us, you know, hone this in so that so that when we do pay a payment, we are exactly sure that we get what we want. This, I write contracts all the time for my work and that's what I am, what I do is I itemize everything, exactly what is going to be done. So everybody knows on both sides, what is expected when I draw payments.
So I'll, um, I'll just kind of mention this and it kind of ties in with Marcus's comments as well. Um, we, we can, Hunter has kind of a, a table database that he's put together with all the ordinances that he's identified with some overlap and duplication and that sort of thing. So we can go in and try to kind of table some of our expectations with those ordinances, um, what we want to make sure we get addressed. So that we almost have a work plan for the consultant so they can work on, you know, these, these section of ordinances first, this section of ordinances second, and that that can be something that we put together as that pay for performance kind of plan so that it makes us do the job of really isolating what exactly we want to, to actually work on. If that, if that makes sense, Hunter and I can work on that.
Yeah. And the other thing that I like about in focuses uh, proposal, and I was looking back through Ken and Keith from what they did, it's like that ongoing support which we have not had from Ken and Keith. Uh, but it's, it's still, it's like where you know, this process i- is a length process. There's a lot, I mean, it's going to be a two hundred and fifty to five hundred page document. I mean, that's taking all our orders and putting them in and, and so it does get that opportunity, that ongoing support too, is to, to make sure things are done to quality, to make sure things are, um, everything's addressed as we wanted, like but that, that initial kind of process with planning board is to get the meat done. And then if there's anything that comes up or any that we have that ongoing support for that.
Can, can we request, can, can we request a red line document? So everything that they do needs to be redlined. And if they've changed the number, if they change anything, it's redlined. So we see what it was before and what they changed it to. And then it's probably easier for planning board to review it and go through it and for anyone that looks at.
I can request that. One thing that's a problem I can ask, um, in focus that I would prefer that anyway. And that's part of the reason with Ken and Keith was like, wasn't a red line. I mean, it, because it's, I was all done in their software and it had like comments of like where it's like certain title change, but it, what you couldn't really follow all the actual changes that were made. Um, and, uh, but no, I would, I would prefer to have a red line document. Or at least a more detailed outline slash detailed notes of hey, this whole section was, you know, a duplicate of something else in our order and something like that. So it's been fully deleted, like, I would definitely want that for my own purposes as well.
Is the, does the town attorney review the, the proposal?
Has he reviewed the proposal? Not to my knowledge. No, I mean, this was, I got this proposal last week and we were talking about budget. Basically my goal was, hey, what are your thoughts on the U D O? If so, then we can, I'm not necessarily asking for action by anybody tonight. Um, it's mainly if we want to have a better looking ordinance, a cleaner ordinance, then this is a route that we can potentially go down and get started in the next month.
He, he does look at contracts before I sign them though. I always get him to do that. So he will.
So again, this needs to be done. I understand that. I'm still not happy about the fact that we're having to spend another giant chunk of money on this. So I need for Hunter, I know you weren't here last time, but I need you and I need Christina. And I'm happy to sit down and go through the contract with you with the new one and the old one that we've already had done and make sure that we are covered. And I love the idea of kind of having more milestones in there. It's once you hit this, we'll give you a check for this. Once you hit this, we'll give you a check for this. And I, I'm not, I'm not down if they, if they don't want to work with us on, on a contract that we feel comfortable with, then we need to find somebody else to do it. Because I'm not going to get screwed out of money again. I'm so tired of it. I'm so tired of turning around every time we're doing something. It's like, oh, well, the contract's so vague. I mean, that is not acceptable anymore.
Well, what, um, and Christina, if you want to chime in, my thoughts with this would be to, um, double check everything with Ken and Keith again. Uh, I mean, I've slowly been doing it, but I've not.
Let me, let me just say this, and I go back to my same, the same email that I keep referring to is unless you can find something that substantiates the fact that we told them to do X, Y, and Z, meaning that you go back through and look through all of the emails that Rohit and Tom, and I don't know how you're going to look through Tom's because I don't know if he had his own email that he used within focus or if he had an email that we, we issued to him from a Marvin account. But unless you can do that and substantiate where we sent him, sent them information that they did not do, I, I don't know how to substantiate the, the claims that we have. That's just, I just don't know how.
No, and what I was trying to, like, I agree with you on that. And I, the only emails that I've got in regards to that is the ones that I sent.
So have you, have you went back and looked at Rohit's emails to see if he had correspondence to them, the outline exactly what he wanted?
Yeah, everything in the email to my knowledge was then basically setting up a phone call and whatever those outline or what discussions would be a phone call. And I don't know exactly what then was said.
So I, I, I mean, I still think it, I, I still think it stands today, like that we're back to square one, like it's kind of arbitrary language that we can't substantiate a complaint, uh, we can't substantiate our complaint that they didn't do their job because I don't think we did our job to tell them what we wanted and expected out of them in that journal.
What I was getting to was to go back through the reorg document line by line, um, and see what changes were made, if any, regarding language and stuff. And potentially if it's something that we can maybe salvage, then we don't need to necessarily go down this full route with in focus for U D O rewrite. It could be some more of a consult, like a, a help type contract, but I, I highly doubt that's going to be the case. And then with that being said, it could be brought to, to council, I guess, at their work session to move forward. I want to just, as, as Kim's kind of mentioned, I just want to double check that we exhausted all options and haven't missed anything before we spend that money.
I, I would like to let council look at the contract that is highlighted that I have looked at and let them see if they think it's just arbitrary language because I don't think that it is. I think it was pretty doggone specific. So I would like to have that at the meeting tomorrow. We can talk about it in your planner's report. We can talk about this in your planner's report. And it'll give everybody an opportunity to look at it.
We can definitely do that, but at this point, I guess, what is our recourse since we've, we've already paid the contract. Are we gonna?
I don't know because, I don't know because nobody's called them and told them this and had a conversation with anybody. They're not returning emails, but I mean, if somebody calls, like somebody's going to answer the phone there, like it, it, at the very least, like I can yell at somebody about it, like at the very least, it'll make me feel a little bit better.
At least feel better that where, where we went, where we went wrong and can point out, we can at least point out to where they might have gone wrong and some things that they, they fell short on and still worthy, you know, having that conversation with them. But that, you know, we, we just spent forty thousand dollars for someone to rearrange our deck tables.
If nothing less, we can point out, or maybe they'll agree that they fell short and compensate us in some way and then.
But we don't know until we don't have the conversation. Okay. So Hunter, if you can bring that contract to the meeting tomorrow, the highlighted one that I have seen multiple times.
Is that something you can send us before the meeting or is it going to take a lot of time to?
It's pretty big.
The contract or the annotated?
The, the, the contract that has the highlighted like, like stuff that I'm like, that's not arbitrary. That's pretty specific. I'm not saying do it now.
You, it's in the V drive, Hunter. You should be able to pull it up.
Okay. Yeah. Then I can, um, we can get it in the, um, we can get in the back and I can have them emailed tonight.
And then we can talk about it tomorrow.
Marcus says, Marcus says he can make the call.
I'm all for doing this because I know it needs to be done. I know you don't have time to do it, but if we're going to do this again, we are going to make sure that it is rock solid tight to make sure that nothing is getting through the cracks this time.
Oh, I completely agree.
Any other comments, questions? All right. I think we have our marching orders. Um, next up we have discussion of twenty twenty-three goals and priorities.
Crickets. Yeah. Well, at the biggest, the biggest goal and priority, like, I mean, regardless of how it's done is definitely ordinance amendments, fixes, changes, rewrite or whatever. The other thing that kind of is under that umbrella is definitely which I've been working on is kind of the, the process, making sure processes are clear, flow charts, whatever. Um, other than that, that's the staff main goal. Uh, and then I mean, obviously kind of see what happens from any type of development proposals, any, any of that, but that's kind of out of my control, um, as and when it wins, somebody submits something or uh, you know, the process it goes through, but I, this can be a discussion if there's any goals, recommendations, directions via from council or planning board or both to staff that they would like to achieve or would want staff to work on. Kind of just open discussion for this.
I'd actually like to, to talk about two things. One is, um, I think I mentioned this to you guys a couple of weeks ago, but um, I know that the council has been doing like, you know, coffee with council at like four, five o'clock at night. Is it decaf? So maybe coffee with council. Um, but I'd love to do something with the planning board or with like not, maybe, maybe not the entire planning board, but, um, outreach to the community about, you know, just a free, you know, a free talk where people can come and ask questions about, hey, if I wanted to do this, could I do that? You know, just so it's not so, um, formalized and it's, it's just getting their questions answered. Um, you know, just so they kind of understand. And I think a lot of people don't even realize some of the rules that we have here, um, because you see it all the time with people just putting things in their front yard and their backyard, you know, moving things around. And so it'd just be nice to, to find some, some type of event um, where they could come and, you know, pitch ideas and things and we could say yay or nay or.
I think it's a great idea.
The only problem with that is that we, we've tried to have meetings, just open forum meetings and nobody shows.
Again, I don't care if anyone shows. We, we are, we have said, our council has said and made a commitment to being transparent with everything and anything to, to planning board. We do, we do coffee with council. It's an hour and you sit there, you know what? I'll give up an hour. So no one can ever say, well, we tried to get in touch with you guys, but you, but you're, but you're never around. You'll never answer our questions. No. We do, and now I think we're doing four town hall meetings a year. We do coffee with council twice every month. We do, I mean, so I think it would be a great idea to do that. And, uh, you know, have a council person sitting with you as well.
So that's what you're trying to get a council person to join you, but you guys would put out the.
Well, I don't, I don't exactly know. I mean, I'm not even sure that the rest of the, the rest of the planning board would even.
Do it on a rotating basis?
Like, because we came into the questions with Hunter.
I mean, we rotate where, you know, because you don't want to quorum, obviously, but yeah.
And we don't have to do it as, as often as you guys do.
If you did it once a quarter.
But yeah.
If you did it once a quarter, again, the, the objective is having our constituents to say, man, at every, at every turn, there's always a, a venue for us to come and ask questions regardless if it's, if it's with the council or planning board or whomever, they can get their, their questions answered.
Can I put a tiny home on my, in my backyard?
We, I, I mean, I, I think you, you probably know, but we've, we've even done the kids with council. And so, I mean, we're, we're just trying to find every way possible for people to come and and learn more about the village and our processes and what we're doing, our ordinances and whatever the case may be and questions. And so we, because I firmly believe that by doing so, we see a lot of the propaganda and a lot of the rumors and stuff. There are very few that what, before I got here, there was just like every other day, there was something new going on. And now with our social media and with our newsletters and everything like that, and our coffee with councils and, and all of this, it, you just don't, you don't see as much. And now you see it, you, you don't see much at all. And.
And planning, you know, planning board, like most people don't even get involved with the planning board until something's at the door of their neighborhood and then they're upset. And so, you know, um, that's one of, that's.
We say the same thing.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So it's like, you know, by, by, you know, offering up like, you know, you, you have a project or like, you know, a home or land improvements that you're thinking about, and you just want to kind of, you know, toss it around with us. It's like on the porch with planning board, we could sit in the rocking chairs, but, um, you know, I just think it's, I think it's good. But, um, you know, I just think it's, I think it's good. It also shows that it, it gives more awareness to the fact that we are just neighbors. That are serving our community. It is a service role and, um, you know, if the more comfortable they are, they might. Want to join and, and, you know, when we're all old and decrepit and we have to roll off because.
I also.
I think it's a good idea.
The opportu, I mean, I like the idea and I'm trying to, I'm just thinking through. Cause the biggest thing, and I know Kelly, you and I talked about this, it's kind of like, it's like basically like a zoning and planning one-on-one type class slash like FAQ slash whatever you want to name it. Because there are a lot of people, I mean, just how it is, is that they don't either know sometimes if they're in Marvin or not. And or like, okay, does Marvin ordinances apply, Union Counties? Okay, what are the ordinances? And as well as even like, what's the process? And it, it's sometimes just, and, and the biggest thing too is also what's the difference between our land use plan and actually ordinance? Like, cause people look at a land use plan and think, oh, because that property is identified as commercial, then that's what it is. And it's like, no, like, it's kind of just trying to, you know, provide an opportunity to explain the basis of what are the planning and zoning? What are the documents? What are, um, some of the, you know, standard slash frequent? Ordinances that apply to, to residents when they're applying for zoning permits, whatever. So, um, it's definitely something that we can, you know, discuss further and how, and how we proceed with doing it. But I don't, I think it's a good idea. And at the same time, if we do it once, then we kind of have a foundation of either doing it again. And or using that to, for documents to provide to the public.
Cool. Um, well, and, and, you know, I'm happy to help kind of lead it and market it or however we want to do it. But, um, the other thing, the, the, the second topic, and I don't know if we even want to get into this, but I am very concerned about Union County. And, um, so I do think as a joint group and, and as a, as the planning board chair, I would really, I know you guys probably haven't had a ton of time to even talk about it. But like, how are we going to be addressing the fact they're, you know, not approving infrastructure in Marvin? I think that's a really big concern, especially seeing that, you know, um, you know, I don't. We know there are many of our, our neighbors don't want development, but at the same time, it's, we still need, we still need to be able to provide services for our, for our community. So, um, any thoughts or should we table that to a different discussion?
Joe doesn't have his microphone on.
Okay, sorry. What my comment was to the county is when they were going thumbs up or thumbs down on this project over here. Is at the end of the day, we, we're, we're planning and we have to know what we can accept. Now, we did challenge them in the last woman meeting and I don't know what that is. But if you were to find out, and it's, it was the public meeting, so I'm going to just say it. I questioned the town man or the county manager. He said that was a county decision, but I don't know if you know this, but we spent close to five million dollars. Five million dollars to buy eighty some acres of land, put aside to essentially create more capacity. They went after the election, the current county immediately leased it back to the people they bought it from. Now, I, I've never seen the land, but I, I told him I would have offered them more and just had a hunting club out.
How much was it?
It was the three thousand dollars a year.
Two hundred fifty bucks a month for a fourteen hundred square foot house and eighty-seven acres.
Eighty-seven acres. And, and their argument was, do you know how much it would cost to manage that and keep the grass cut or whatever? What I found out later is from another county commissioner is they did it and we started questioning. And I would question now why they all of a sudden changed this. What is it? The, the, is, um, Twelve Mile Creek is now off. And they've gone to crook, what is it? Maybe because of our meeting, but all we were doing was questioning. And we had municipal, municipality officials asking the question if it was such a good deal. And what they did is they, they did it for nine years and eleven months, keeping it under the ten year where they didn't have to put it out to bid. So now it's not out to bid, that we're stuck with that. That's our money. I mean, forget about the other thing. That's our money. And what I learned after the meeting, that Mr. Williams, another county manager begged them as an attorney. To have an out clause in that. There is no out clause in that nine year ten. So they're, it's eighty some acres. It, I, I, I didn't, I didn't even know what to say. I, I don't, I can't imagine that the county was so irresponsible with that money and tying it up and then leasing it back. Again, I offered to pay them more just to have a hunting club for ten years on that property and I haven't even seen it.
But as a municipality, what, what rights do we have, if any at all? To, I mean, like it, we're all paying taxes. So.
Cause municipality governments can't sue other governments within the state is what I was told to, to challenge them on this. So it's going to have to come from an individual or developers or whoever else that, you know, wants to be able. Because there's a thought there, if you have that kind of control on the thing that what happens to land values.
There, I mean, there's also the opportunity to go to the state, um, because Andy, correct me if I'm.
So there is a certain capacity limit that if you, if, I mean, if a county reaches it and they don't have. Okay, without a solution, the state can step in and, and take over the sewer commission. One of the, one of the biggest things that I find is, is a, a problem is that the Union County Water and Sewer Commission. Board of Directors is the county commissioners.
It's not separate.
There is not separate, um, from, just from my stance, I feel like that there should be a county commissioner on that board. But I feel like it should be a separate board, not just the county commissioners. Because at this point, it's all one hundred percent political on how this, the sewer commission is run. Okay, they've, they, um, they, they did this. Commissioner Rushing's rationale for this lease was that they don't have a wastewater permit. For that piece of property yet, which is granted by the federal agencies as to how much wastewater can come out of this thing. So they wanted to table this. They knew they couldn't build it. They said it was a three hundred million dollar project to build this wastewater treatment plant. This is what he disclosed in this meeting. So this is why he said in the meeting that they were going to allocate money to build a one and a half million. Gallon expansion of the Twelve Mile Creek facility, which is in Waxaw.
That was in the Wuma meeting.
That was in the Wuma meeting. So what they've done now is they've come back and they flipped.
As of last night.
And said they're going to go ahead with the Crooked Creek, um, expansion and defund the Twelve Mile Creek expansion. Which I don't understand how they can do if they're locked into a rock solid lease for nine years and eleven months. So I don't know what's going on with the county. They sound like they don't really have any idea of what they're doing. And one of the major reasons why Commissioner Rushing said that they are going this route. Is because he feels like that the people who are paying the sewer tap fees and whatever for the use of the sewer should not be paying for expansions. While I agree with that, okay, to a certain extent, they should be, people that are using it should be paying for maintenance, okay? Expansion should be people, should be paid by the people that are expanding it, that are adding to the usage, right?
Just say the word, developing it.
Developing it, right? So, and, and that would be fair. But in reality, they rescinded the increase on the, um, sewer fees. Which has put them at more of a financial deficit than what they were. And they are already way behind on even just maintenance. According to what they're saying, they can barely even maintain the system that we have in place now. So one of their ideas, which, which they would have communicated this to the rest of the world. Because they said they came up with this idea a year ago was allocating certain amount of gallons of sewer capacity to each municipality. And letting the municipalities then dole it out per zoning, which would help planning. It would help the county plan for the amount of, of, uh, capacity that they need. But it allows municipalities to develop their municipality at their discretion. Well, we thought about this a couple of months ago about, well, going, doing. As, as a retail outlet and buying it through an interlocal agreement with the county at a wholesale price, which we would then be able to do exactly that. So had they communicated this to us a year ago, this could have already possibly been in place and this mess down here already averted. But there is no communication on the county's level whatsoever.
So, and we're talking to the state. Christina has reached out to our state representatives. So we're trying to get them involved to help figure out what we can, if there's anything they can help us with. We've invited the commissioners to our meeting. One has said yes. But he's not sure if he can make the work session. So we're just.
So what, what's the, what's their capacity right now? Like, I mean, you said they need to be at like.
They're below eighty percent. They're, they're committed out to ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent. But in those numbers, um, what we've, what have, we've learned is that the, the numbers that they have committed to are estimated numbers. So when they, when they commit a certain amount of gallons to a project, oftentimes it comes back at actual is less than what their estimates are. So they're not quite as far committed as they seem on paper. What I understand is, is that once the county reaches eighty percent capacity, the state can then step in and take over the sewer commission and run it.
Which I don't know that I necessarily want to have that happen either.
Given the way DOT runs things, I'm a little scared of that. Okay, so, and here's the other thing. Cause one, my first initial knee jerk reaction was, well, let them come in and take over and then that gets it out of the county's hands is mismanagement to begin with. But then that, you know, how is it going to be managed on the state level? And then number two is how do we get it back once it's been taken? And you know, and there's, there's a lot of answers that nobody seems to have, or a lot of questions that nobody seems to have answers to. So everybody is concerned about this, every municipality, every council, every mayor, everybody is concerned about this countywide. It's not, uh, I can assure you that there are people talking about this and, and working on solutions. We, we certainly have our hand on the pulse here, but there are limitations as to what we can do. As Joe said, we can't sue the county.
I've got a question. Uh, I want to be clear, the pump station was for the, the Twelve Mile. Is that correct?
No, it would be going to Six Mile Creek.
That goes to Mecklenburg.
Goes to Mecklenburg.
So it's not putting, it was not putting any, any burden on. County whatsoever.
Just ma, just maintenance costs.
Just maintenance costs.
They, they chose because they asked the developer to do, do all these things, which the developer did do. And they came back and then they just continued to drag out a decision. We were at multiple meetings.
But they weren't the only developers. I mean, there's, there's.
Right. This is just.
There's a contingent of developers that did the same thing or put through the same. Here's a checklist of things that we need for you to do and they, and they each went through and did everything that they were asked to do and then they said, no.
And it has no, it has no bearing on Union County sewer.
The only issue was, um, they brought that up in the, in the February twentieth meeting. But the only issue was maintaining an argument, maintaining the pump stations, um, and how they do that because the cost was.
Well, what, what Stoney said in that woman meeting, if you recall, he very blatantly said that he would not approve any pump station whatsoever at this point. His rationale is, is that it's, um, if it's not gravity fed, then it is, um, unbuildable land. That's being forced into being buildable and he will not approve any pump stations whatsoever, private or, or public.
In that same meeting, they also approved quadruple the zoning that, um, that butts up to Marvin. It's in Union County, they own four homes and one acre.
Two acres.
Two acres.
All along in Indianland, they have pump, they have separate pumps going to the forced mains from houses. They do that all over, all up and down five twenty-one on out, outlying, uh, roads. They, they have, uh, even down Edgewater. I mean, I've done, probably done some work down Edgewater. They have pump stations individually on properties that pump up to the street. And into forced mains. And they, they don't have that here. I mean, there's forced mains all over. Down here in front of my property is forced mains. They would not let me tap into that whatsoever. I mean, it's crazy.
Somebody say something about reaching out to Charlotte and Indianland about potentially contracting with them. Seeing that Union County can't seem to support infrastructure.
Yeah, but we would have to wholesale it out with them and get there. We'd have to do an interlocal agreement to get use of their lines.
The other thing is, is that they, right now, um, we would have to have agreements with Union County's sewer system. Because that's the infrastructure that goes there at this point. Unless we spent money to build infrastructure to get it to Lancaster County. Or existing going to Mecklenburg, which is kind of cost prohibitive. I mean, we, as a municipality, we don't have that kind of money to build sewer mains to get to Charlotte. As close as it is, we still don't. And the same thing with Lancaster County. And I don't even know if Lancaster County would entertain taking it.
Go back to what they said by Stoney. He said he would not approve. You, you still have to have Union County's permit to build a, a pump station. Regardless of where it goes. And he said he would not.
But they also talked about allocations, um, that individual, like allocations that we could go to them and they would allocate. Which I don't know how that would, how that works.
That would be great if they would allocate to each municipality and we could, we could get through. We could plan our, our individual communities if we had a capacity limit that we could pull from. Would, it would be great and it would be great for planning on their part. They could build the infrastructure to support it. But it doesn't seem to me like they're organized in their planning or have any whatsoever, any communication. They just do things and.
I'd like to make a point that the pump stations are not above ground and not an eyesore. You can't even see them. They're all below ground and they have. Well, I'm just saying that, uh, there's been some chatter that, you know, the beautiful aesthetics of Marvin would be hampered by pumps. No, it's all down below ground.
Anyway, so continued challenges. Elections have consequences. Unfortunately, it's not the regular election. It's the primaries here in Union County. You got to show up to the primaries.
So we'll keep you guys posted on meetings going forward. And if anybody wants to join us for those, please feel free. Because I think having some planning board as our planning board would be pretty helpful.
Yeah, and you guys, I mean, our, our Wuma meetings every month are open meetings as well. And you guys are more than, more than welcome to come and, and listen in and, and give a public comment. It's the same kind of format as our meetings and it's, there are, there was a, were a lot of people at this past.
Oh, yeah, this is the most we've ever had, but it, what was on the agenda was.
Was about the sewer. So, yeah, so it, it's, you know, if you guys are interested in, in what's going on, on the, on this side of the county and what we're doing to, as in cooperation with each other. Please come and listen in and, and you'll, you'll learn. I mean, it, as we, as time goes, we get more organized and we get a little bit more efficient in what we're doing. And we help each other out and that's what, that was the whole point is cooperation. And, um, we are hopeful to get Waxaw in. We're working on that diligently and they're trying to attract Indian Trail as well. So if we get all seven municipalities all together, meeting once a month, that's, it's, it's power of numbers. We get to.
We're a big part of their budget too, being on the western side.
I mean, yeah, the biggest part of their budget.
So if, um, Hunter and Austin, if you guys could maybe keep the planning board. So if, um, Hunter and Austin, if you guys could maybe keep the planning board updated on any upcoming meetings, like reminders or, um, we can maybe just cover them in our meetings. Like, hey, don't forget these are the upcoming meetings that are dealing with X things that we might, would be nice to have a planning board member at. Um, yeah, or any, just anything that like, you know, if they've got a county commissioner coming to their meetings.
Commissioners is coming, we've got multiple coming, or we set up a individual meeting as we've asked for and they still won't respond to us on that. But yeah.
Oh, okay.
May one, okay.
So just so you guys know that we, we, we share, so we go from one municipality to the other hosts so that we don't all go to the same place all the time.
I'm not showing it. What day? I don't have it down. That's why I'm asking.
Stallings.
Stallings.
Well, we appreciate the work that you guys are, are doing, trying to problem solve this. I mean, we spend a lot of time with the developers, looking at their plans, like everyone's invested, like neighbors as well as planning board members and Hunter and, and, and everyone, you know, on, uh, on the village staff invest time and, and energy and brain matter in this. And then to have, you know, a project that you know, just get potentially wiped. All of that work goes away and you know, it's the devil you know, and it's, you know, it's, uh, it's just, it's very disappointing. And, um, what are we all doing here if we can't actually do responsible, you know, development and so, all right, thank you.
Um, any other priorities or goals? I, I do have one just to reach out to, um, I guess, planning board. This year we're having, hosting our second Marvin Day, which is on June third, if you can mark that down. It's a Saturday. This year, because we couldn't work with the high school other than for parking purposes, um, we're hosting it at, uh, Eford Park. Couple of things that happened this year, um, we've exceeded, I believe, our sponsorship where we just reach out. So you guys have contacts too, that are either local businesses or whatever. We all were assigned different groups and stuff. And I think, uh, last year, we were, we did like thirty two thousand or thirty three thousand dollars worth of sponsorship. So nothing was paid by the taxpayers to put that on. This year we've already have committed, uh, thirty six thousand dollars. So um, fireworks, if you haven't been to it, it's, it should be a great show. Um, so think about, what's it? Concert, a band concert? But we are looking for more, uh, individuals in the dunk tank we are having this year. So, uh, I mean, I say you guys vote on one, at least one of your planning board members. Michael hasn't said a word.
Except for Wayne, because he's got his bum wing, but we're all going to get in there.
Get a chance, you can, you can, you know, but anyways, no. Obviously, a lot of the planning has, has been done. It is June third. Um, but for next year, we'd like, love to have you guys, uh, even if it's, you know, if you find a sponsor that would help us with, with this as we move on. I think it's going to get bigger and bigger every year. So, it's just unfortunate we couldn't get it to the high school because that was a, a great situation where, when the fireworks went off at the end of the night, there had to be over five hundred people there. So it'll be, it'll be nice at the park. Yeah. But, um, other than that, then we'll move on to open topics. Do we have any open topics discussion? Anything that's been? All right. Well, with that, I am going to, uh, ask my group to, uh, for, to adjourn. All's in favor.
Sorry. So Mi, Michael Lavell moved and, um, and, um, oh my gosh, Melinda seconded. All in favor? All right. So moved.